It's up there, 24%.
You're on the TV.
You're on.
Get on.
Yeah. Okay.
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 That's good.
701.
Perfect. Okay, first I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to tell you how the hearing will proceed, but first I have to give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. And please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. If you would like to participate remotely from a computer, go to the Zoom meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. And with that, I'd like to introduce the board. To my left is Lisa Normedin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel, James Bazikowski, Hans Winthrop, Dawn Gurney, and Steve Dubois. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. Will be a public comment period. If you would like to speak, please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. Tonight, we have two different hearings. The first hearing is 14 Peninsula Drive. They are seeking a special permit to construct the 24 by 30 attached garage under 250 dash 7.4A1. And the second hearing will be 560 Malpus Road. The applicant is seeking a special permit to install a ground-mounted PV solar array under 250 dash 4.13. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicants are Allen and Claudette LeChance of 14 Peninsula Drive in Lunenburg. The undersigned makes application as follows. A special permit to modify an existing non-conforming structure in such a way that increases the existing nonconformity. Proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250, 7.4A1. Street address of the property is 14 Peninsula Drive, MAP 29, parcel 44. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Allen and Claudette LeChance of 14 Peninsula Drive, and the deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 1342, Page 105, and recorded February 1st, 1984. And it's signed by Claudette LeChance on May 31st, 2023. The project narrative. Existing conditions. The subject property is located at 14 Peninsula Drive, which is shown on assessors' map 29 as parcel 44. The property is located on the westerly side of Peninsula Drive and contains 0.25 acres of land with 75.56 feet of frontage, making it a pre-existing and non-conforming with respect to area and frontage. The lot contains an existing three-bedroom dwelling which is serviced by municipal water and an onsite sewage disposal system. The existing dwelling is non-conforming with respect to the side yard and front yard zoning setbacks. The entire property is located within the Residence A zoning district. Proposed conditions. The applicant is proposing to construct a garage addition on the existing dwelling. The new construction will require modifications to the existing house and the removal of an existing shed. The garage will be installed at the end of the existing driveway and will match the architectural characteristics of the dwelling. The addition will not add any bedrooms to the dwelling. As the proposed project involves the alteration of a non-conforming structure and increases an existing nonconformity, side yard zoning setback, the applicant has filed for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals under Section 250, 7.4A1 of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. The special permit criteria, questions, and answers are as follows. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire explosion, or other reasons? The reply, the proposed use of the property is the same as the existing use, a single-family residence. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous, as it will not add additional traffic and does not constitute a new danger of fire or explosion. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, the improvements will increase the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed addition to have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines if in open use? The reply, the proposed use will remain unchanged. The garage will provide additional off-street parking for vehicles on the property and is not anticipated to create any increase in traffic on Peninsula Drive. The garage will match the architectural characteristics of the existing dwelling and will not be unsightly. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply, as mentioned, the proposed use will continue to be a single-family residence. The proposed garage will not create any increase in noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines. This is dated May 30th, a letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The purpose of this letter is to provide written authorization to allow staff from Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, Inc. to represent our proposed project at 14 Peninsula Drive. Respectfully submitted, Claudette LeChance. And there is a butters list. All these butters on the list were notified two weeks prior to tonight's hearing. There is also a copy of the deed, a copy of the field card from the assessors' office, the layout of the proposed addition, and I'm assuming, building, and the building plans. I also received in hand from Mrs. LeChance a letter dated July 5th. To whom it may concern, we Kathleen and Michael Ross of 26 Peninsula Drive, Lunenburg, understand that our neighbors Claudette and Allen LeChance of 14 Peninsula Drive are planning to build a garage on their property. The garage will be two feet from our property line rather than the five-foot setback requirement. We have discussed this with them and are not opposed to the plan. Sincerely, Kathleen and Michael Ross. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
With that, I would invite the applicant to speak to the matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. Thank you for your time this evening. I am representing the LeChance, the LeChance this evening, the applicants. And I appreciate, as always, Lisa, the reading of the application. I'll just summarize the plan, walk you through the plan, so try to put some legs on the narrative that was read. The property on Peninsula Drive is a non-conforming lot. It's located within the Residence A zoning district, which requires, modern-day requirements are 40,000 square feet. The property has, I'm having a hard time reading, 10,700 square feet. So it is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. The structure on the lot is also pre-existing, non-conforming. It does not comply with the front or side yard setbacks. The front yard setback is 40 feet in the district, and the side yard setback is 15 feet in the district. Existing today, on the, as you're facing the property, on the right-hand side, the house sits approximately 13.1 feet from the side yard, and I think that is 10.3 feet, if I correct, I should have put the plan closer to me, 10.3 feet from the street line. So hence a pre-existing, non-conforming situation. The applicant is looking to construct a garage that's nominally 20 feet wide by 30 feet deep, and it would be connected to the house by a four-foot breezeway. On the plan here, I'm not sure if your plan is colored, but we colored this plan for presentation purposes. The pink polygon here is the proposed addition. The existing house is this gray scale structure read in here. And in fact, there is a bump out of the existing house that will be removed for the construction of the garage and breezeway. So the driveway, Peninsula Drive is here, of course. The driveway existing today is right in this location here. That bump out of the house would be removed, and an addition of 24 feet in width, which would include the 20-foot garage and the four-foot breezeway, if you will, connecting the two, would be installed right at the, you know, where that bump out is, right at the backside of the existing driveway. There's also an existing shed on the property, which is right in here, which is actually located 1.2 feet from the property line today. That would be removed as part of the project. And the proposed offset to the garage would then be 1.6. Thank you. I'm having trouble with my eyesight here. 1.6 feet is our proposed offset on that side yard setback. The front of the garage would be set further back from the road than the existing house. So we'd be not, we would be more compliant with respect to the front yard than is existing today. It's really just the side yard setback that we, the reason we're here is really the side yard setback. In your packet, the applicant did hire a local architect, Damon McQuade, to design the plan. So I think you have floor plans and some elevations. So they've really put some thought into making this fit in with not only the architecture of the existing house, but also the architecture of the neighborhood, which is why we dare come before you for a special permit, as that's one of the criteria that was read earlier. I think I will leave it at that. I'm happy to take any comments or answer any questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question. You said the, on the front part, there is an entranceway that you said is, how, the garage itself, what are the dimensions of the garage itself without that, without the bump out?
So the new garage is going to be 20 feet in width.
20?
Seven, six.
Connected with a four-foot, maybe that's not even, is that a breezeway or is this just part of the garage?
It's just part of the garage.
Okay, it's not even a breezeway, so.
No.
There's going to be a, one garage door, and then there'll be a human door, right, you know, right next to the existing house.
So it'll actually enter into the garage and go into the house?
Correct, yes, yeah.
I see. Okay. So in the back part, what is the width of that?
Say that again.
You know, where it kind of goes down in width.
Down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just, so the lake, of course, is down, is down here. The 100-foot buffer zone is actually this dash line here. So all of the work is actually going to be performed greater than 100 feet from the lake, in this case.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so you're gonna leave the existing driveway as is?
Correct.
You're gonna start the construction where the shed is, the front of the shed is? Is that correct?
The front of the bump out of the house. So there's a, there's an existing, kind of hard for me to.
It wants to be even with the house.
You can take that with you if you'd like.
There's an existing.
You, you have to take the mic with you or move it up. Yeah, good idea.
I don't know if it'll reach.
Recording in progress.
This red-hatched area is an existing portion of the house.
Oh, it is the.
Yeah.
That's that bump out.
So that would come off, and then the garage would be put in its place.
All right, that, that's.
Yeah. And then the shed is down, is down here.
Down in that section.
In the sort of the backside of the proposed garage.
Okay, so it's, so how many feet is it off the, off of Peninsula?
So the existing deck here is 10.3. We're actually, I don't have that dimension for you. We didn't list that dimension, but it's probably, it looks like 15 feet or so that will be off a setback from Peninsula. So a little bit further away than the existing house and deck.
Okay. All right. I'll open it up to the board.
Chairman, I think, I think the applicant answered the questions I had. I mean, one of the questions that I had was that bump out, what was going on with that? But obviously, from the plans, and then, you know, one of the concerns that I had was it being so close to the property line, but obviously, the butter has no issue with that. And the fact that the shed's been probably sitting there for a while, and that's as close to the property line as this attached garage is going to be. That was my concern. I think having the butter saying that they have no issue with it is not an issue for me either. And then the last one question, but I probably know the answer to this, is the big oaks that are right there by that shed are probably on the butters property, right? Yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Don't have any.
None? None, and none. Okay. I'm not going to push this too far, but I'm just wondering, what, why do, it's a 24 by 30. A normal, a common size of a two-car garage is 24 by 24. So is that just for extra storage, or?
I presumably, I'm not sure.
Yes, and you want.
She has to come up. You have to come up to the mic and give your name and address, please.
If I could repeat the applicant, she, she said that, yes, the extra depth is for some added storage, and I think there'll be a staircase. Staircase up to the top of the, to some storage up in the, or another space up on the top.
Okay, so it is.
So it's just to accommodate the vehicles, but then also to have room for storage and the staircase to access.
Okay. All right. Okay. Hearing no other questions from the board, I'm going to ask from, I'm sorry, public comment. Why I have so much trouble with that? And I even wrote it down in big letters.
Good evening. My name is Martin Thomas, and along with my wife Kathy, we own the property at number 30 Peninsula Drive. I'm here this evening to convey to the board our complete support for Allen and Claudette's plan to add a garage to their property. Not only do we not oppose it, but we think it'd be beneficial to their property and beneficial to our neighborhood.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak from the audience?
Anyone on Zoom?
Is anybody on Zoom?
No.
Okay, there's nobody on Zoom, nobody else would like to speak. I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We grant the special permit as requested.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Aye.
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 And I say aye. So with that, it is granted. I do have to read you the post-decision instructions for a special permit. Special permit is granted with the contingency that the petition complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premise. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. Copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and a special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, good luck with your new garage.
Thank you.
Look.
The people in the back.
Nope, they were here.
They were here. Okay. It is now 7, what is it, 20, 20? 7:20. We do have another case, and I have already introduced everybody, so we can go right into the reading of the next application.
Okay, this is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of each of the applicant is Claire Ryan, 520 Malpus Road, Lunenburg, Mass., 01462. The undersigned appeals as follows. Seeking a special permit for ground-mounted PV solar dimensional variation on a parcel that lacks the required 20 acres. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250, 4.13C. The assessors, the street address is 560 Malpus Road, assessors' map 65, parcel 9. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is James L. Ryan and Claire F. Ryan, and the deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 9555, Page 195, and recorded February 24th, 2020. The special permit question and answers are as follows. Please describe how the proposed action will prevent conditions that are injurious or dangerous to the public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire explosion. The response, following OSHA DIG SAFE guidelines. B, please describe any material adverse effects on the land and value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The response, ground-mounted PV solar panels. Please describe how the proposed use or activity will be operated with reasonable regard for order and unsightlyness if in open use. It's 92 feet off property lines, meter located next to shed on opposing side of proposed system. Please describe how the proposed action will reduce and/or prevent noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And the reply, following OSHA DIG SAFE guidelines. Additional information relative to the applicable section of the code of Lunenburg, it's 4.3 acres in the Zone O district. This was filed online, so the format's a little different. The following additional information is provided because it is considered important to this case. Ground-mounted PV solar, 14.22 kW, 36 total panels, located on property parcel 65-9, 4.83 acres, trench from meter to system location, property connected by side to another property owned by homeowner, parcel 65-8, 3.68 acres. This is signed June 14th, 2023, by Daniel Rubin from Freedom Forever Solar and Claire Ryan, 560 Malpus Road in Lunenburg. And the, there is a list of butters, all were notified two weeks prior to this meeting. There are, and there is a plan, a site plan showing where the, where the house is located, where the other lot is located, and the site plan done by Freedom Forever and the ground-mounted PV system construction notes. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to address the issues.
So, does anybody need plans?
Yeah, they gave us tons of copies of plans for you guys. They just, okay. So, my name is Richard Bellato, I'm representing Freedom Forever, applying for a variance.
Can you speak up a little bit?
We're just applying for a variance for the location of the solar mount on the ground.
Your name?
Richard Bellato.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Richard Bellato, I'm representing Freedom Forever.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I don't know what else you guys want, really. They didn't really tell us much. They just told us to come answer any questions you had.
Could you just, just basically review the whole system? Now, I know, looking from, from the road.
Hi, my name is Nicole Rosario. I'm also from Freedom Forever. So, the system size, she already read, 14.22. There's no battery for this system. She read where the trenching was going to be. What I do think is also pertinent is Claire Ryan has two lots. So one of them being the 3.6, and then the other one being 4.83, which is a total of 8.51. The large-scale ground-mounted solar, the installation is defined, it wouldn't be, the way her driveway is and set up, I guess it wouldn't be imposing on anyone or anything other than her property. Because the bylaws in your town are 20 acres or more, from what I understand. So she just wants a special permit to have it on her land.
Okay. So, like I say, I didn't go on the property, but I did look on Google, Google Earth at the property. So I'm assuming the, where you're setting up and from what you have given us, if I was in the driveway, is to the right of the barn, I'm going to call it a barn?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And I know you said it's 36 panels, and I know that it's 780 square feet.
Right.
But what is the actual width and length of that?
Is it on this one? It's a single page he gave you.
13.3 feet by 59 feet, 59.9 feet.
69 point?
59.
13.
13 point?
13.3.
By?
59.9.
Got it. Thank you. And you also, that setbacks from the backyard, and like you said, they're like 92 feet, 97 feet.
92, 97.
Or any other.
240, yeah.
It's actually in the front.
So, and I vote, everything must go underground, is that what you're saying?
That's where the trenches.
From there to the house?
Yes.
To the garage, I believe?
Where the meter is, yes.
Where this, where her, where her panel is, is the garage.
To the panel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that right, Chris? Is your panels in the garage?
The electrical panel?
Yes.
Yes, that's one, just outside the garage.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions they may have.
I think it's a very appropriate location for one, and I know we've had solar for seven years, and my neighbors had them ground-mounted for five years, and it's been extremely appropriate.
It's helpful.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, so I think there's a couple, a couple things, right? So if I'm correct, they're going for, because it's a large amount, large-scale photovoltaic, because it's over 10 kilowatts.
Over 10 kilowatts.
So they have.
How many kilowatts is it?
They have a.
14.
Yeah, so they have a 200-foot buffer that they're supposed to be meeting, and they have 95. Is that just because of where the array is, where you're locating the array?
I believe so.
So where you put the location of the array, on this, if I'm looking at your, the stuff that was in the application? Obviously, you picked that because there's no, there's no trees or anything like that, right? It's probably south where you're going to capture all of a sudden.
Right.
So you're looking for relief from the 200-foot buffer, I would think, right? Because you're only at 92 feet somewhere around there.
That, as well as the acreage that required for this.
And then, then you said, this particular parcel's 4.3 acres. You need 20 acres, right? So.
Well, she owns two, she has the lot and the lot next to her as well, so it's a total of eight something, 8.5.
So that, is that the 2.97 acres that's right next to her, or is it the, is it?
I have four points.
Yes.
Yeah, that one can show, does they have that one? I think they have that one.
I mean, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
The, it's.
But in total, she has eight acres, a little over eight acres.
But the field card says you only have 4.83 acres.
For that, for that.
So are you saying that?
Yes.
This, this parcel right next to it, that 2.97 acres that's undeveloped, is that her property as well?
Yes, this is the one.
So she owns both of them?
Yes.
This one right here?
Yes, Claire, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Or two, something. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
As well.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have more questions.
Steve?
I have a question. On the special permit requirements, it says, please describe any material adverse effects on the value of land. The answer that was put down is ground-mounted PV solar panels. I don't think you really meant to say that that was an adverse effect on value of land and building.
No, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
I, I, it was filled out for us, and we.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was something.
So I think that, that question was misinterpreted. I do apologize.
No, that's no problem. And this is not going to be visible to any neighboring property?
Well, no, if you look at the, I don't know if you have seen the flyer for these, where her driveway goes down?
Right.
It's, it doesn't look like it's going to be visible at all to anybody but her.
Right. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is that correct, Claire?
Correct.
Just so you can hear for her.
Yes, see it.
Well, there is an undeveloped piece of property on the other side of where that is. So where, where your array is going, 92 feet from the property line, that piece of parcel is an undeveloped parcel that is not owned by you, correct?
Correct.
My opinion, the likelihood of someone building a house right next to where that land lot goes where yours is, is probably unlikely. And even if we gave you the relief from the 200-foot buffer zone, I don't think that they would see that if the, if the trees had no leaves on them during the fall time or the wintertime. I think you're, you have enough property back there, tucked back there, that if they're gonna put a house on that, that other piece of property, it's not gonna be as far as up where, where you're sitting. So, just my personal opinion. I did go down your driveway, because I couldn't see from where I was going. So I went down and I took a look at where it was. So I was satisfied that, you know, granting you relief from, from the, the requirements, I don't think would be, you know, a deviation, deviation from the bylaw, so.
Any more questions? I think we're good. Public comment? I don't believe there's anybody, anybody on Zoom?
Yes.
I just want to know if you think they're, do you have any comments?
Really, you didn't. I kind of follow the rules.
Okay.
You just have to, I'm sorry, you just have to say your name and your.
Claire Ryan, 560 Malthus Road. And I think it, it's a great thing personally for us, the electric bills in, in that house are fairly astronomical, and especially in the summertime. We just received our first one of the summer season, and it's, we really don't even have that much on, and it's $800. By June and July and August, it's 11. So, and I just purchased an all-electric vehicle, which I'm now plugging in, so I don't even know what that's gonna do. But, so this would be extremely helpful.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with no other public discussion, I will bring it back to the board. There's nobody on Zoom, you said?
Just me.
Then we shall bring it back to the board and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit for a ground-mounted photovoltaic dimensional variation on the fact that granting it doesn't deviate from the, or degrade from the intent and the purpose of the bylaw.
Thank you. Second to the motion?
I'll second.
Then I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 An aye. Okay, so with that, the special permit is granted. Yeah, you have to read some post-instructions on a special permit. Special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances, any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. A special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and a special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced.